I'm gonna promote.
And Stan Sin for month?
That's why she's so well loved throughout the city.
Many, many reasons.
There she is, and I'm ready to start. Well, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, Birmingham City Council Study Session Order. I'm looking at you, Mike. Study sessions are always open for the public to attend in person, or you may choose to listen in if you remotely. Please note that the content of the agenda bills is subject to change. No public comments will be taken, no action is anticipated. Any of the items approved for actions by the council tonight will be placed on the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council Meeting Agenda, as otherwise determined. Finally, an ongoing reminder that questions or comments by the public may be submitted on any item at any time by email to city.council@birminghamlaw.gov. And Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online within a few days following the meeting. Our first item up tonight, folks, is item A one. It's the Quarterly Program Update. We have forty-five minutes allocated to this. We'd like to welcome Dr. Janice Briggs, our Diversity and Community Engagement Manager. She's gonna give us a quarterly program update. So, council, I talked to Janice before the meeting, and we'd like to reserve questions until after her slides are done. She has approximately twenty-five slides. So, Janice, if you're ready, the floor is yours. Yeah, so I should go, uh, go up the slideshow?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. And to introduce you, I turned the volume down.
I just, I just muted it.
Yeah. Mike's got, got. There we go.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Good evening, City Council members and members of all communities who are moving online. I'm here to give a quarterly program update on the work that's been passed with the City. So my first slide up here, I have what is our engagement strategy for our city? And that is to, how can we create more inclusive, effective, and sustainable community engagement strategies for this city? Three definitions, just so that we're on the same page when I talk about the public's contribution to my mission. Uh, the public is any resident group, community, private, citizens, and other stakeholders who may be impacted by or interested in the today's momentum of issues and decisions. Public engagement is providing opportunities for the public to have an informed say on issues and decisions that affect their lives through dialogue of mutual respect between government and public. So, year one for this role is really foundation building, and I've been having ongoing monthly meetings and sometimes five weeks with leadership, the mayor, um, HR, uh, legal, et cetera, just to give updates and give any feedback we might have for the goals and deliverables initially established under Mayor Wheeler's direction. On the sliding screen, some of those deliverables that, um, at the onset of the May prior to shared. So to be, to add as a, as a lead, some between the city and community partners to establish community trust and connections, attending meetings, then again, understanding what makes the city of Birmingham unique. Uh, another task was to revamp the mayor's diversity statement page to be the central location for community engagement work. So I don't have a before, but I'll show you the after. It was just a page with a statement. And so, working collectively, uh, with my coworkers, leadership, we have truly revamped that page to be an engagement hub. And you see that as the, uh, as I go through this presentation. Development of the department's goals and objectives, and we have a strategic, uh, community engagement plan. It lasts before internal work groups, members of think tank, we have opportunities to read in on the plan. It's in draft right now, and, um, the next step will be presented ways to leadership and again, to get any feedback to tighten that up before, um, the event, before we come to final.
I love the fact that we've got closed captions up here in the presentation.
Um, I, some other things, uh, just to build and maintain relationships with various city departments. Uh, that's important as this work, we have internal stakeholders, we have external stakeholders too. Just need to have a really good working relationship with my colleagues, um, whether it's, um, you know, helping with communication messaging for finance department, volunteering for a water fact event, with our water utilities, again, it's the relationship building. So coming into, um, this role and to this video from again, I needed to understand the lay of the land. Okay, where are we? Where do you want to go and how will we get there? And so, prior to me starting, the city has been doing, uh, community engagement work. It has been engaging in, uh, inclusion, uh, diversity, equity work. Uh, for example, uh, the cultural competency training was offered to new growth of staff. Uh, we had, uh, react, again, this is before my time, I just wanna lay the land, so we understand where I'm going here. And then, now the hiring of my role, and then the M F R, which is in consulting report that was, uh, that came out as well. And so now, based on the current state, how do we develop a strategy? What does that look like for us? Um, to creating internal systems and structures and establish those community networks and connections. Uh, establish community, uh, needs with external workforce. And again, complete the initial scope of work and deliverables from leadership, and then any applicable findings from the N F R, which is more consulting reports to incorporate those similar strategies as well. Then we'll need to execute the plan, uh, and then also communicate our plan to both internal and external stakeholders. And then allocate budget and resources to support goals as needed. And then how are we gonna measure for, uh, results? Um, I have created a milestone tracker for myself. Um, I have documented it like here, but in quarters. So I was hired in March tenth, so quarter one, which is from, um, January first to March thirty-first. Um, what are the things that, the activities or the goals that were accomplished there? Were they completed? Is it ongoing? Is it in progress? Again, just to track the work, uh, in quarters. That's if, and everybody processes information differently, that's just how I work. I just need to make sure, okay, we're in quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four, so now reporting back to leadership. I can say this is what we, this is what we accomplished in quarter two. You have to pivot to quarter three because of, um, etc. Then, you know, eventually we wanna create, uh, a key performance indicator or dashboard tracking process and, uh, track progress and achievements against goals. I'll probably have to work with I T because I'm not that savvy to get those fancy, you know, dashboards and the graphs and everything, but, um, that's, that's one of the goals. And then, just wanna make sure that we review the leadership and the community advisory group when that is reactivated. Um, and it wins and learns, and, and how do we keep going? And hopefully by annually, and then to provide updates to city houses, such as what I'm doing now. And then one of our stakeholders provide, um, credited input on climate surveys. That since that last, uh, consulting report was done many years ago, it would be nice to just circle back and see a climate survey to see where staff, staff is at in terms of engagement, et cetera. Again, as I mentioned, um, foundation, year one is to build them. We have the Birmingham Think Tank, that is one of our internal work group, and they serve as an inclusive sounding board to provide organizational leadership, feedback, insight, and support for initiatives concerning employee community engagement. We meet once a month, and we're trying to also bring in some of our community partners, um, some of our community, um, members to, or meeting these ten, fifteen minutes for them to share about their organization, any needs that they might have. The Think Tank is a broad group of, uh, skill sets and books. It's not about titles, so you might have, for example, someone in your service who might never have an opportunity to go into community and hear what's happening, who's in the ground. So bringing our community members, for example, our last community member, Jada, who was completely completely certain that she had the opportunity to share with staff what their organizations are doing, anything they're doing right now for our, um, government, federal workers, and then any needs that they might have, um, volunteer needs, et cetera. As mentioned earlier, the diversity and community engagement initiative plan that is right here is in draft mode. Um, I have added any input that the D P T might have to that document that it moves to the next step for leadership to review, and again, any input from that. This work, as you know, is a collective effort and collaboration, not just one person, but I need all the different insights, the different experiences, the different skill sets, the rich institutional knowledge here in reference to this, um, the work that I'm passionate about. We have a crisis management toolkit for administration right now. It's very legal, so we wanna make sure that everything, um, passes through the overall, you know, right standing. Uh, communications plan for administration, some, um, education and awareness tools. That's on our community engagement hub, which will be there for a few minutes. And just working with different departments, internal, internal H R, et cetera. I have had a lot of different meetings in the community. These are some of the highlights of our community needs, and I want to say that, um, I didn't want to, um, add or take away from their lands, what they see. But I know that there's gonna be, we need to have some education and awareness around city government, what we can and we cannot do. Um, for example, there's one of the, I'll sit back a little bit, but here's some of the needs. So transportation needs for families with children with disabilities, especially non-English speakers. So while decisions are being made, the decision makers, makers, just be mindful of, of that, um, as you may. Families with children with disabilities who are also non-English speakers, and possible, that'd be my solo. Accessible fish gate areas for children who are physically or invisible disabled. Um, the need to leverage resource and work together across sectors to support all community members. But again, we're in this ecosystem, we're only one part of the crisis. So, city government, working education department, sector, business sector, health sector, all of us just leveraging our resources to really help others and, and center the needs of all, uh, members of our community. Another thing, um, that came out of some of the meetings is healing repair from strained relationships with government agencies. And as I mentioned before, um, I didn't wanna take away from what specific language books are using. So for example, internship opportunities for college students from BIPOC community. This will need to, this would be internship opportunities for all college students. Again, wanna make sure that we are inclusive. And for those who doesn't know, BIPOC is Black Indigenous People of Color. So as, as a, as a, as an entity, as an agency, as a city, we can't say we're just gonna have this for one group. We have to be all inclusive. So again, this is that person's perspective. I didn't wanna take away, but I wanted to let you know this is some of the things that's coming up from my meetings. But again, education and awareness, as a government agency, we have to have internship opportunities for all college students, not just. Um, help to promote ser, um, services offered to community members who are free and secure. Um, so a lot of the community agencies, some of the different nonprofits just asking for, how can we elevate some of the needs that we have? Um, because only have one person, we're helping the community, so. Again, sharing information about the role of local government and how students can get involved. Um, just as we think about our next generation of leaders, um, tapping into either elementary school, tapping into our high school, again, current or, or next generation of leaders for civil service. So finding opportunities for students to get involved, I will be working with. And I'm gonna prove to see how we can strengthen some relationship with the Birmingham High School and positive projects. Another thing, up for an oiling, which becomes diverse, community language access, we use barriers and subject delivery. Um, speaking internally with our, um, department, uh, we have language lines. So our customer service, um, representatives, different members of our community have access to that. Again, for a community member who might just be out there in the trenches would not know that. So that's where the education and awareness pieces are gonna come in. We do have some of these. A few weekends ago, I attended a meeting at, um, the high school, and, um, the, the speaker, the speaker was speak, um, their primary language is Spanish, and so we had headsets, so I was listening in English, we had an interpreter. So it felt like I was right there in their story, telling, you know, just as they shared their story, shared their experience. One of the things, um, the presenter shared was that, um, she doesn't, she only knows how to write her name. And so, again, it's a think about the community and the different listeners raised from our members, members of our community. Just some of the things that are, are out there. Uh, several local nonprofits, they're looking for volunteers. And then another thing, transparent communication with the city, just, just again, if, if the brain doesn't have the information, they're gonna make up, it's gonna make up stuff. And so just wanna make sure that our communication is, is transparent, and, um, if we, we saw any mixed feelings about, um, our, our community. And then opportunities for community to be specifically engaged and understand local government. Uh, so they're trying, um, highly share earlier, um, I think this month or last month, the city of Birmingham, we have a civic academy. So they've reached out to them to find out if they have a pro, a, a process or framework that they could share with us, what that looks like. And I think Mayor Wheeler also have, um, sat on his radar as well, so trying to see how can we, again, get our, get our community to be specifically engaged, they can make as much informed decision as possible and understand, um, on the local government, what we can or can't do. Mentioned before, um, performance on measures. So to date, I have attended over fifty community meetings and events. Uh, it's exciting because I get to be out there in the trenches, and I'm hearing from our community members. I'm seeing what lights, what brings a spark in their eyes, and either children running around, or just getting those stories. And I think it's so important to build those relationships, again, when you think about trust, when you think about communication, you're out there. And as, as I often say, you know, I am not the decision maker, but I'm, I can bring back that to legislative body and Mayor, like yourself. And so quantity, how much did we do, as I mentioned? Those, um, the community meetings and events are separate from my one-on-one community meetings. So I've had community members reach out to me just to have a one-on-one, just privately, I don't wanna say, oh, I met with, um, Michael at Goodman Baker, or I met with, um, council member, um, Michael, or, you know, it's just, so again, those meetings are separate. But it's just the, I'm here to listen. Um, and anything from your land that I can bring back to the decision makers or leadership, I'll be happy to do that. Um, and then, um, yeah. This is the only one. And so, the quantity, um, how well did we do it, again, in terms of performance measure? I have a picture there of, um, just my milestone tracker, as I mentioned earlier, how, what was done in quarter one? What was, what were the goals, activities, the outcome, what's the, um, status of it? Is it completed? Is it in progress? Has it not yet started, et cetera? And is anyone better off? And later, I'll share some of those, um, short stories in my slide. And so far, I've had requests to serve on different, um, stand-in application for, uh, to be on the board of an organization or committee, et cetera. So, and wherever I go, the city goes, because I'm representing the city. This is our diversity and community engagement hub, as I mentioned, um, earlier. Wanted to give, um, kudos to, um, folks who have contributed to this webpage. Uh, Kipser Public Health District, the B C A Ts, or internal work group, Birmingham Think Tank, We're Better Together Foundation, City Council, and Kipser Daily Services. Mike, I don't know if I said this, if try to go on the house, you know, this is for city council, you wouldn't.
Well, probably not. I'm gonna try.
Yes.
Okay.
The link works?
Yeah, the link works.
If you're trying to stop sharing, then just share.
We share, I think.
Yeah.
So this is the updated, um, diversity and community engagement hub. Again, this is a space dedicated to building connections and building community, inspiring positive change. Uh, this is a, uh, an ask from the leadership. And you can see what we have there right now is just, um, reminding our federal workforce of this kind of, and some of the support services that are available to them from the city and other, uh, resources that have shared. Uh, community members have an opportunity to submit their questions or feedback, there's a form there. And there's also different resources, so from legal updates, mayor's vision of the initiative to community, feedback from B B I, or somebody wanna look at the timeline on portion belonging from, for the city, it's there as well. The community engagement framework, information about Birmingham Think Tank, if you wanna schedule a request, you know, a meeting with Mayor, et cetera, that's there. Um, just extreme line process, or instead of, you know, that's another option. You can call, but there's another option, you can provide us much information about your time, you know, requesting for the mayor. And so, um, that's there, uh, again, you can click all of these links, it will take you to, and just give you more information about this is what the diversity and community engagement hub webpage. So, I will stop and go back to the other, other, the continuing of. All right. All right, so I just wanted to highlight some of the meetings and events that I've attended. Again, it, it would just be too much for, all of it would not be on the slide. Um, so the ones both are, um, formal speaking opportunities that I had in my time here, uh, doing Freedom Festival, uh, the Kipser Health District, specifically their, their health equity collaborative had asked me to kinda speak about the work that, um, we're doing here, uh, as it relates to the diversity and community engagement hub. Uh, a few centuries ago, I spoke at the end of A T P U Law Forum. Again, that was another, another opportunity to be in the space of our next generation of leaders and to just talk and, and have them answer questions and just, uh, uh, interactive dialogue. Well, Zion Missionary Base's Health Conference, as well as the end of the A T P rally, and the Police and Community Together app. Um, I raised some panels along with people, thanks to me, and, sure, with their. All right, you may have to eat this article in the Kipser Fund. So the Kipser Fund did, uh, interview on my role, et cetera, but I just wanted to point out that out of that article, several community members reached out for one-on-one, but there were some key partnerships that have been formed out, out of that article. And I'm just gonna highlight those that everything is well, they reached out after reading the article. And so, we're gonna have a government-based pilot program between our organizations, and this aims to increase civic engagement and transparency by providing residents and students with direct access to local government's operation and decision-making processes. Also, this program will serve as a community engagement and recruitment tool for city jobs and boards and commission board meetings. That's a purpose for that one. And then the second partnership is a sub-credit union. This is going to be, again, a four-week financial wellness pilot program for city employees. Um, this initiative directly supports the city's existing wellness mission by addressing a critical source of employees' personal finance. So, a different body of work to be going. And for that, we just wanna highlight, uh, all of that article that was repeated. Short stories, I love stories because, or different experiences and everything that we've been. I just wanted to highlight, out of all the meetings that I've met, I've just met so many wonderful people, but some, some of those meetings just stood out and were just be unforgettable. One, I have here, community members standing alone in a crowd, thank you for seeing me. And so this was at the Veterans, um, Day Parade, and I, I just, I just walked and said hello to the person, and that person got very emotional, and he said, I've been standing here, and people have been going through it from, and nobody said hello. So thank you for seeing me. And so this is the gesture of just hi or smile, how are you doing? How are you really doing? It's, um, because you just never know what people are going through in any moment. This next one, um, this person said, "Come messively and decline him, but I still want to include it before I forget." And this member of the community shared, um, with aging, how, you know, even forgetting where their check was there, and et cetera. But they had the opportunity to tell me their story, their, the things that they did over their lifetime, and where they volunteered, and how they're, they love the Birmingham community, and et cetera, and you have to promise me two things. You, you have to promise me that you're gonna take your family to Boreal Guard Reserve in Cambridge Island, and you have to go to, um, I think, Bushard, um, in British Columbia. I said, okay, I promise, so I'm, I'm gonna be fulfilling that. But just a wonderful conversation, and just the rich knowledge that I learned and read from their, through their experience. The next one, so I spent some remembering, as we know, right now, is around the world, people are hurting, so many communities have been hurting. And this was one of our community members who had, was talking to me, how you doing? And they got very emotional and said, it's very hard for our community, right? Uh, the next one, my dad worked for the city. Oh, my goodness, this was, uh, a, a, a young community member, and was so excited. And I was volunteering at the Kipser Beer Ground, and they saw this video of Birmingham, so much pride, so much joy. And just, my dad worked for the city. And just to engage with them, and again, um, it's always so enlightening and just filled my bucket to be able to use spaces and hearing across the lifespan, different experiences and what brings people joy. And then the next one, uh, thank you for protecting our water. Again, this was, uh, another volunteer event, um, in the beer grounds, and so I, the, the community member, as he came up, I said, oh, I have to tell you, I don't, I don't know anything about our water, I'm just volunteering, and, and he said, do you drink water? And I'm like, yes, and he said, well, you know everything about water. And so we had a lovely conversation, and that person just wanted to say thank you to the city for protecting our water. And, um, these are some photo galleries. We are neighbors. At the end of the day, we are neighbors, we need each other, uh, through compassion, through kindness, through care. And again, even if we, uh, disagree, but just being in a space to think about what is, what is, what is best for community? What's the best thing moving forward? These are just some highlights from some of the friends, uh, events. Um, this was the Veterans Event, and I don't know if any, whoever was there, this car broke down. And just to see community members coming together to help push this car all the way to the finish line, it was, it was beautiful to see. Um, something with pride, you know, there.
A lot there.
And this was the J Team Event, um, just different, we had, um, Mayor Cambridge Island, different legislative, um, folks in different offices. And this was Kipser Fund, which is a very wonderful day. The Roberto is twenty-four. And favorite, oh, not one of my favorites, colleague, favorite day, that day. Um, and then, um, this was for his first, his first high school. And again, it's just different, different events, different activities. And again, it's just different, different events, different activities, but what I really want to, you know, focus with is, you know, my force from our web page, that start where you are, use what you have, do what you should do. Just remembering that as we think about creating, we seek thriving community, it is not a sperm, it's a marathon, and so we're in the foundational work. And as we pivot to next year, I'm hoping that we can deepen engagement. While this engagement was just this goal, I want to look at a higher level now. What is engagement? What does engagement look like for, for, um, community development office? What does it look like for public works? And so if we can have that one unit fund that goes, we're community engagement, that's concerned. And with that, thank you so much, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Briggs. So we still have about fifteen minutes left for any council questions or comments. We will start with Vice President.
I'm wondering if it would be appropriate on the, um, your webpage for us to include all the different discounts that the city offers for both, uh, public and private utilities and, um, taxes to, property taxes, I mean, that goes to the county, but. And then, um, one complaint that I've heard from several people, and it has to do with our council chambers, is people with, um, hearing issues. Their hearing aids don't work properly in that room, I think because of the acoustics, but they felt that there was other devices that might make it possible for them to attend meetings more regularly.
Yeah, what else did I write?
So how do you decide which community members to invite to your think tank sessions?
So the Bremerton Think Tank is an internal work group. So it's not for, um, oh, you mean for the, when they come to speak?
Yeah.
Um, anyone who, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so it's, yeah, just anybody who says, anyone, anyone over community members who have the time to.
Okay.
And it's virtual, it's not in person.
Okay.
If that's another way to bridge and strengthen our community relationship. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm making notes of your comments, and so go back to the leadership. And make sure that the chambers is more accessible.
Okay, thanks. It's a very nice presentation. I appreciate the work you're doing.
I'm a glad.
It's study session, we usually just do first names.
Yeah, Janice is fine.
Okay. Um, so I wanted to follow up on Think Tank. Um, so that's obviously, there's a link to it on the hub.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but how is the knowledge out there in the community?
Um, when I'm out and about and, and sharing and speaking, I talk about our internal work group, because again, um, I'm only one person, and I really appreciate my colleagues. When I started, I sent out an email, you know, about volunteers, seeking volunteers to help drive this work. And they answered the call, and have about twenty-one folks, again, across the different departments, different skills, different. And so when we're meeting and we're looking at, I think, a policy document, they're bringing those, um, yes, and they're really looking at the documents that we're interested in, with all of us, so. And, um, there's one, um, community member, it's not even Bremerton, that they founded a think bank, and they reached out, and they're like, well, I'm just making notes. I'm stealing stuff from you, I'm like, this is fine, make use, you know, so it's, it's nice to see that, um, other communities are using this hub as a, you know, tool for them to start their own.
Um, just a couple of, uh, questions, I love his wins and learns, that's a great one. Um, what is a belonging timeline?
So, um, I wanted to, again, when I mentioned earlier, I wanted to get a feel for the day of the land, and use of a different state coming in to give you what happened, so. I, I don't have it here pulled up, but on the hub, if you click it, it would be from two thousand nineteen, what the city has been doing around inclusion, around equity, so folks can shop. So we have this historical timeline, so maybe ten, fifteen years from now, we can build on that timeline, okay, this is, I mean, this works out before me. It is just formalized right now in role, but, and so I want to, uh, make sure that I'm honoring and appreciating the rich knowledge that existed here before I started. So that timeline is just showing what the city did in two thousand nineteen, two thousand and ten, go. Going, they did, they did.
Well, as a species, we forget pretty quickly, so that's a great thing. Um, the, I just had a, a couple of, a, a couple more questions, and I, I really like everything that you're doing here and how you're pulling everything together, and I think in this case, having you not be from Bremerton has worked out really well for Bremerton, because you're just looking at it like a blank slate. So that's pretty wonderful. Um, you had an organizational meeting with the city of Bainbridge?
Yes, I, again, I have, even though it's, so they, I, I reached out to their equity folks, um, first of all, there, and she would have loved to meet with you, and I've been meeting, reaching out to different communities outside of Bremerton, who have this role to find out from there, and are there opportunities that we can collaborate, collaborate on? So, yeah, I met with her, I met with the manager over there, and, um, just to find out what they do, what they're doing. They actually, um, have a react, which we got from us, and so kind of just, I went over there, it's beautiful, and have a conversation with them, and just be, what are some of the things that she's working on, and, um, again, beauty community just out there, and I sent out lots of emails. I'd love to have, oh my gosh, I had so much coffee one month. Why am I still off?
Not sure it's worn off yet.
I'm going to have to go back to DCAT. I, yeah, I, I, I think all of these organizations are great, although, um, some of them I had to vote out while, while you were speaking.
And that's just an example. I, I have a Excel document with the organization that I've met, what came out of that, maybe it was a partnership, maybe speaking opportunity, maybe it was to connect with a, with a colleague here, et cetera. So I have that in an Excel document. Just want to make sure that we're, I am documenting everything, I'm tracking everything, to, again, make sure that that's transparent with, with the leadership is, is there. So I have another document.
And then just the final thing is, um, like I did a government one-on-one, I mostly town hall, it's government one-on-one last month, and so I'm thinking, how can members of the community reach you? Like, the hub has a way for people to reach out from there, but how can people reach out to you?
No, the next slide has my information there, and I think also, I think it's also on the, the website, because when I get any feedback, it comes to me, I do those things. And when I'm all done sharing, and one of the things I also learned from some community organizations, their sharing are how they're sharing, right, information.
That's great.
It would be nice, um, to even leverage to how you're going to move on, again, how can we, um, not really going to be real, but if we have this one idea, how can we then strengthen the identity of our organization?
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, great presentation, so happy you're here.
I'm excited.
Good, thank you, Jeff. Now, thanks, Dr. Briggs, for all your, all your work, and really grateful for your, yours, kind of two questions. First one is, what, what level of communication do you have right now with, with directors, and then on a work plan to, to work with them on public communications? Kind of thinking of recently, there was a Bremerton Police poster to you that caused some controversy, um, I think could have definitely used your input on. Um, so I'm most of that, is that any work plan to kind of work closer on those communications?
So Mayor, we have been inviting you to all of the director's meetings, so I attend those meetings, and the student, and keep updates on my role on to the directors, and if there's any, um, any request for my feedback, I'm there, I'm available for them, and, um.
Gosh, they have to come to you and record your, your input?
Well, I guess, yeah, I think so.
Well, well, I don't, I don't know if that's completely true, because I'd heard some issues with, um, some of the communications from the police department, and so I asked Janice to look into it, so I think, you know.
I'll reach out to Chief Law, and then just have a word with him.
Yeah, I think it can be extremely valuable to them if they take advantage of it.
Okay.
I guess second question is to some of your slides, so it's been over nine hundred days since uh, the ordinance was signed of law, creating the Race Equity Advisory Commission. Still have yet to have an appointment to that commission. Is it on your work plan to, uh, work on an application process for folks in that department to be made, or is that not on that work plan?
So year two, engagement, that's going to have, um, uh, under the mayor's direction, we, we need an external work group, um, what, what does that look like? Um, again, for the mayor's direction, we look at that. I do have a strategic plan, um, when that work group is reactivated, I'm, I would recommend having some, like, some session, um, with, what does community engagement look like, what are your dreams or goals, or all, it's, it's, it's in a strategic final inbox session too, and then how do we come together on those, those goals. There's a whole section for that, um, so.
So is there any, is there any concrete timeline for appointments to be made at that commission, or does it sound like it's long here?
I don't have concrete timeline, um, but year two will be starting next year, because we need engagement, we want to bring in our external, um, community folks on us. So thanks to you, so how we have the Bremerton Think Tank engagement, externally we have a community work group.
Good. Janice?
Just to follow up on, on Jeff's question, because it's not really clear to me, um, communications, Parson's Management Toolkit for Administration, Communications Plan for Administration, um, so what is that cover? If it doesn't cover the police department, or if it doesn't cover the fire department, I realize that can fall, you know, uh, outside. Uh, is it going to be working with the Department of Public Works on a communication plan? It will be, you know, is it inclusive of all the departments?
Yeah, so it can draft, from right now, the lens was from, okay, from the expected office, what this communication looked like. And I think we're going to have to, like, uh, from a macro level, or what is going to be given across the agency, it looks like, but that's almost like a whole different job. Um, but I think a unified approach with how we communicate to the community, um, is, is going to be needed.
Yeah.
Um, I'll follow up with Chief Law, and to see, um, how we can work close, work closely with, as a communicator, with the community, and ensure that, um, or, or communication transparent, you know, really represent this.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, Dr. Briggs, you're right on time. We gave you forty-five minutes. Congratulations. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And, and I'm available.
So I'm going to un-promote you so we don't have any, uh, voice, uh.
Yeah.
That one can't be spelled.
The close.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. And we're going to turn to our agenda bill briefings. Our first item up tonight is item B one, which is a confirm appointment of Betsy Pigstad to the Bremerton Arts Commission, and welcome Mayor Wheeler.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, President, and good evening, council members. So, um, as Council President Younger said, I am requesting confirmation of, of Betsy, um, being our newest member from the Arts Commission. So her resume is, um, you've all seen it. Have a look for your support.
Any questions, comments?
This is a comment, she, she looks very well qualified. I am concerned that the Arts Commission meets on Wednesday nights, so we can never attend in its, or to even view it online, and I'm wondering if there's some way that could be adjusted to another time, instead of Wednesdays when we hold council or study sessions.
We're good. Um, at the very least, council member, we can, the directors back here, who can take it under consideration, along with the other considerations that they, they have to review and, you know, as far as picking that date time.
Okay.
But I, you have been heard.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
She's got, really. It's, she's a catch.
Good.
Yeah, I liked the part where she was like, I, I waited for a while to make sure I was really hooked up. I love that.
All right, how do we treat this item?
Consent.
Then it is, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
So the next two items, I'll like to welcome our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Tim Barker. Item B two is the agreement to purchase a restroom from Green Flush Technologies LLC for the Gold Mountain Golf Course, also.
I have no formal restroom presentation.
I thought you were bringing up like a model or something.
Going to reserve the potty talk to, in order to go with that.
Yeah, you're crafty.
Also, Daryl Mayne is here.
So Daryl, Matheny, Matheny is here to, uh, help with this one, as it's a golf course item. Um, so obviously, we have funding, uh, this year in the golf course capital budget to place an off-site restroom, and I'll let Daryl speak to the item.
Yeah, so the, the proposal you've got in front of you is, is one of three that we received for this, uh, for this back. Uh, it was the least expensive, and only option that, uh, without referring water, just an a vaulted toilet. Uh, this, uh, replacing one of the two, we've got two, uh, uh, permanent bathrooms on the little bit of course. Uh, they were built when we opened the bell first in ninety-six, they're both vaulted options, but they're, they're the old hole right to the, to the vault itself, so they're, um, they're certainly not, um, up to par with, with the facility itself, so, uh, so this is a nice option. Uh, again, it's going to replace one of the two. This is a project that I started last year. Uh, I earmarked fifty thousand dollars in my capital budget last year. Uh, when I started work on, uh, getting bids, uh, I realized very quickly that, uh, I wasn't near enough. So I pushed that, uh, that project to this year, took it to a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, and, uh, this particular bid, uh, will come in, uh, under that, or it's also, uh, so. It'll be a nice option, I don't know, a really nice addition to, uh, to what we have.
Okay, questions? Fred, Jane?
Okay, so this is replacing an existing, but, um, is there water at the existing?
Yeah, we have water.
You have water?
Yes, not in the existing, but we have.
But there's water right there. So it looks like this is, they're going to take a crane and drop, drop the unit. Who does all the connections? Who carries? Like, does the, uh, extends the conduits? Who extends the water lines? Is that?
So the Green Flush will, will, we've got to bring it to the actual site. Uh, my maintenance team will do some minor prep work, uh, but a majority of it is done by Green Flush.
Including pouring the concrete slab?
Yeah, all that's done, all that's done offsite, and they, they bring it in, train it in, uh, and put it, uh, put it together on site.
Okay. All right, so then, I'm guessing that the other, uh, facility that's similar, that's something that in the next year or two, that you're going to want to replace with something like this also? Okay.
Yeah, and I, I, just so you're, you're aware of what we're replacing, I tried to take a picture, but this is, this is our current.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Rated port potty, if you will.
And that's nicer than the one at Pendrick House.
And, but that's, uh, that is, uh, is, is identical to the other one that we have on site, so we've got ten that look like that. So, uh, I'm replacing this one, this actually will service, um, both golf courses, because it sits between, between the two, next to Fifteen Green Cascade and Four Tea Olympic. Uh, so this, the better the two to start, because it's going to service both sides, but, uh, we certainly plan on doing the other bathroom, so that we can uh, save up the money and capital budget to do it.
Well, it looks pretty inexpensive, but maybe if we could get one downtown, huh?
I was wondering how we were going to.
So we'll stay germane to the topic.
Yes. It's bathrooms.
I'm not pushing it tonight.
I'm not going to be pushing bathrooms downtown tonight, you push. I'm not gonna be pushing bathrooms downtown tonight, you push. I have a really good caveat with this, and I guess I'd like for guys to to look at it, please. We um this council approved a a low purchase price prefab restroom for having, it was craned in. The whole nine yards, um it it was really fun watching the crane, by the way. But a big thing with those prefabs, according to Brian Howshel, the Director of Operations, is um. I'm trying to think of light language here, they're extremely difficult to repair. Because the electric, for example, in the one it had is encased in concrete. Um and I, I don't know what of the plumbing might be, plumbing seems to be okay. So if anything goes wrong with it, the the price of of maintaining it, of repairing it, is for the. Way outweighs the the cheap purchase price. Have you guys been, ha- have you been able to do any research on how maintenance? Um friendly this particular model is?
So uh there's a golf course, I don't know if it's planned, that has, that purchased the one that I plan to personally ask them. Model, and they've had it on site for three years now, um and have no, no issues during the three years. Uh and they're very happy with it, but uh it has only one, one client, but I'd be happy to.
And all the connecting points um in the one it had, and are, it's all centralized in a maintenance room in the middle. So you're just making quick connections through the walls, through the concrete, everything's gone through them now. But there's, there's not a full lot of. There there's not a ton, it's not like everything's encased in concrete, that's the one that happened. Everything is just going through the walls into a control area. I so do not wish to go into details about how you should vandalize a restroom. Sure. Like to talk to you about it at some other time, or or Brian, because, you know, he's better than I am. Um he can explain it to me, I don't know. Sure.
Sorry to go off topic there.
Don't worry, since I've gone through a re-pipe on a house, I did just tell you that uh. I really doubt they're gonna have uh water lines in the concrete, it's gonna be above ground, because that's where your water line is gonna grow up, and through the wall. And then, then with your electrical, it's gonna be in its, its wood frame construction, look at the materials, so. The only thing that would be in the concrete slab would be a drain pipe, maybe a spray pipe. And I'm not the subject matter expert, but I have an experience here.
Okay, how do we wanna treat this item?
Consent.
Consent it is. Hey, so the. You don't have to stick around for this, next one, this is why we pay Mr. Barker the big bucks. He's got his pro up plan, which he's been working on since he got here. And tonight's uh, you're gonna showcase it, you're gonna redo the big reveal. So welcome, uh primarily, I'll say, this is for the public hearing on the ordinance to adopt the twenty-twenty-six Parks Recreation and Open Space. Plan called PROS, I think I called it PROS Plan. Go ahead, Mr. Barker.
Thank you. Council President, uh yeah, as you mentioned, um I was kind of reflecting a couple of weeks ago, and it felt like I'd served as a consultant last year. Uh because I've essentially, uh we've been working solely on uh the PROS Plan the entire time I've been here. I maybe got a couple thoroughly months to to get acquainted and and. Um speak with those that were antsy to have conversations with in the community, uh but then we quickly jumped into this project. In uh early January, um I'm not going to go through the entire plan this evening. Although I've assumed you wanted me to. Here's a hard copy draft, if you want to review one, um I do have a couple extras left available in my office, but I. I have ten slides I'm gonna go through, I try to keep it fairly simple, uh but then be available to answer any questions that you might have. And again, the plan is, is that, well, I'll get into it later, but uh we'll be putting this through uh public hearing and. Um a vote for adoption in December, so. There's four key elements that we wanted to cover, uh that you typically do with a park rec and open space master plan. Obviously, the key piece is doing a uh a full inventory review every six years. And so that's essentially what we did, and again, um I always try to be positive looking at things, and this was, this project has been a great way for me. To learn our park system, uh because I dove in, and again, just like Denise, uh looked at it from an outside perspective. Uh compared to, you know, staff that have been here for a while, so I see different things that they maybe didn't see, because they're working in. The park system on a daily basis, so inventorying our park system is a major component within this plan, and and is a whole. Really a full uh chapter within the plan altogether. Gathering citizen input, again, uh the plan really is driven by the community. Uh we do take into account staff perspective, as we're the professionals, and we know what our trends. Are are going and being able to do future forecasting and the field that we that we work within. But but obviously, to to know what exactly uh we should be putting within our park system, or where should we should be developing, or what. Uh the big um trends are locally, as far as recreational development, we have to gather that input from the citizens. And then uh we have to create a six-year plan uh based on state requirements to be able to maintain grant eligibility. Which, as you're all aware, a majority of our projects receive quite a bit, if not full funding through grants. Uh so that's very um very important for us to be able to keep up and maintain this. Uh typically, your uh PROS Plan review is about an eighteen-month project. Um we decided we wanted to try to get this completed within this year, so then we were ready to go, January one with a new plan. Um and so there's a lot of work that's gone in uh behind the scenes, not just with staff, public input, but our Parks and Recreation Commission has put. An absolute ton amount of hours into this project, three, four-hour meetings some nights. Um I I've put them through, and most of them have have survived it. And then obviously, the fourth, the fourth key piece is making sure that we're looking at future forecasting, annexation, potential annexation of. Our urban growth area and uh where that population growth is gonna be. Uh there's components within here uh that are national standards that we like to meet, um and those are the ten-minute walk through any park within the neighborhood. Within the community, and so obviously, as we develop further out, we wanna make sure that we have resources available. Um when we are looking um towards a future forecast. So just here's, again, just a little timeline, I won't walk through all of it, but this gives you an idea, this is, I hit uh the commission in. December with a draft of this schedule of how we were gonna accomplish this within the next year. Uh so obviously, January, we kicked things off, February, um those were the topic areas that we focused on, regional community parks. Uh something that one of my staff uh came up with as a, as an idea, I'm a very visual person, and and we talked about, okay, well, how about now we're. Out at these sites ourselves, preparing for the meeting with the commission, how about we start taking videos and and documenting what we're doing? So now we have a documentation of every single park, um you'll see on the side, we have. Um essentially thirty-nine sites, so we have thirty-nine separate videos uh that we've created. Um mostly to music, not a whole lot to just speaking, but at least helps provide that visual for our. It was written initially for our commission, but we're gonna start integrating that into our webpage as well. So when you click on and you wanna see what Lions Park looks like, we're actually gonna have a video uh that will go along and match with that. Again, the purpose went for PROS, but uh we're gonna, we're gonna try to use it for other pieces as well. And that was something I think that a commission really saw a lot of value in, was uh being able to come to those meetings, and then we would watch a video. Prior to talking about each of the different sites that we manage, so uh that was a, I think, a really successful part of this. So obviously, looking at a larger scale, narrowing down, uh April was very busy, I think we had nineteen different sites that we. Uh dressed in April between Natural Plaza, you know, Streetscape, Greenway, our trail system, and special use facilities. Uh the survey was open from mid-February into the end of April. And so once we um closed that, then we used um the first couple of weeks in May to assemble. Our responses from the survey, and then be able to provide that to the commission after May. Meeting some results and some initial uh kind of summaries comparisons. I'm a, I'm really someone that, uh we have these, a thing called Park Metrics uh through NRPA, which is our National Association. And that's something that I have a lot of interest in, is comparables and how we look compared to others, other jurisdictions that are similar size. Um and population to what we have within our own community, so it kind of gives you a good idea of where you land. As far as, you know, are we high or low, are we in the middle, and there is a section, again, in in the plan related to. Some of the summary of the park metrics, but I definitely had a lot more information, and that could potentially a whole other. Meeting at a time to just kind of walk through and and go through some of that, and I do plan to do that with the commission this next year. As it will follow up on that. Um goals and objectives, um so looking at what our previous goals were, uh integrating information received from the survey. And uh obviously, from the commission to update our goals and those attached objectives. And then uh really kind of looking at um some of those uh bigger pictures of the the six and twenty-year uh capital plans. Um and making, creating updates to those um as we move forward, and then their review was at the end of September. Um before we uh moved the project forward. So in public outreach, obviously, like I said, is extremely important, um we had, um nine doesn't sound like a lot, but. Um we had nine unique social media posts, but a lot of those were reposted. Uh we scheduled to have reposted, especially related to the surveying, and when the surveying process was gonna be completed. Um and so we received a lot of good feedback there, um that's. When they were cross-posted as well, between the city's page and the department page. Um the website, um I know that we live in a world of social media, but. Um the website really is kind of the home for a lot of the information, so as we were moving forward. Uh we continually updated uh the webpage that's specific for PROS, so we have a page within our department that's dedicated to PROS. And again, looking back at those topics, um the goal is, um we have them up there now, the goal was to. Um section out the recording of the meeting and then upload those, and that's something that I got from the comp plan. Uh that I thought was really valuable, uh is that if someone was really interested in a certain topic, then they can go back and re-watch that, that portion of the meeting. Um so that resource is there as well, uh we held ten public meetings, uh we have citizens engaged and asking questions. And I think, um you know, it was great to do the survey at the beginning, because it really spurred a lot of conversations from the public. And I received a lot of follow-up um comments and and check-ins to make sure certain items were gonna be continued and involved in. And noted within the PROS Plan, um so I think that the the surveying was was phenomenal. Uh really, we uh, six years ago, two hundred and eighty-three surveys is what we received. And this last year, um we weren't quite at nine hundred at the end of April, so I left it open, so that I could have a nice even number. Um but we we, so I cut it off at nine hundred, I think we might have gone two extra days. Or into May, um but nine hundred responses is a great sample. Um took about, I think it said it approximately thirteen minutes to complete the survey, and with the demographics, it was about thirty-two questions, so it was. Real simple, um there was some really good detailed information that we'll even follow up on moving forward. But gave us a a ton of data for us to work with, which was really great. Um and I'd like to um thank the school district for, uh and Karen at the school district, their communications director. For um allowing us to be able to put this information out within their newsletters, because I think that was a huge. Uh made a huge effect on the numbers that we received then, was just being able to get that additional participation from. From those that are actively out with their kids in our system. So um I know this is a high percentage number, and I love to share it though, but to me, this, that that upper left corner. Uh this was the second question, uh how important do you think Bremerton's Parks and Recreation System is? Um to life in Bremerton, if we're not above fifty percent, we've got some problems, and maybe we need to not be here, but. Yes, we barely made that, uh but at basically ninety-seven percent, to me, that tells a lot. Uh that tells me, obviously, that the resources that we're providing, even though they're critical in some areas, which is what we want them to be. Because we want to be able to know what we need to do um to better address the needs of our community. But the backbone to at least know that ninety, ninety-seven percent of the people um support is what we represent within the community is a big deal. Um and that goes to me and my mind as far as a potential future funding, you know, what we're looking at. If you really want us to be a a strong figure in the community, um that support is is extremely important. Um and then the question below it, um how would you? How would you grade Bremerton's Parks and Rec System overall? Obviously, the yellow looks huge, um blue, and then the green, uh that's your A, B, and C. Um as far as the grades, so um that again tells a a big story that um. Majority of, obviously, a large majority of percentage of people are, do feel that um. The uh that they're supportive of the system overall, and there'll be some additional information, we'll kind of talk about. That seems to contradict, it really doesn't, it's more of like, uh you know, a couple of these things got fixed, you know, my grade might change type thing. And a lot of those are are more related towards safety and security, um is the really the biggest friend within concerns that we found. I'm not gonna cover some of the little stuff, um I'd be happy to if you have specific questions on it, but instead of reading the slide. Um I'll just leave it up there for you. Um the themes, um I will kind of talk about that briefly, uh we'll we'll just kind of focus on top five themes. Um within the um the P-FIT group, so our Parks Finance Investment and Parking. Um we talked a little bit about how roller skating facilities jump to the top. Kind of the most commonly noted, and these are not just in the fill-in or the checkboxes, it was comments as well, so. Um it took a few different things into account, so additional comments, and a lot of that, I think, and and I've had a lot of people, groups. Uh follow up with me regarding that, whether it's um Roller Derby or um the. The new group uh that um people weren't familiar with here, I saw it when I worked for the city of Portland, but the bike polo group. Um those two groups uh have definitely come out and and asked us this last year, what can we do to try to help them out? Um as a, as a rule, we don't really necessarily think we wanna get into the indoor facility business. That's probably more something for private business, but I'm more than happy to help make connections, help compile groups together. Uh that have a similar need, um covered space for both of those is very valuable. Um covering an outdoor area, an asphalt area is extremely expensive. Um you know, I'd never really necessarily told them no, but for the city to be able to take something on on our own is good, it would be extremely difficult. Um but there has been a lot of comments, uh you, I I received comments from um middle school groups when I went and. Presented to them to have them fill out hard copies of the survey related to wanting to be able to have a roller skate facility. And it's been, what, six years or so, six, seven years. And so it's not super surprising, and and it probably didn't come up in twenty twenty, just because it was so new, that they didn't realize that what they were missing out on. At that point, yeah, and pandemic, yeah. Uh pickleball is not a big surprise for anybody, um and dedicated courts is really what I heard from the pickleball group. Uh we've accommodated pickleball on tennis courts, which is a a fine interim. Um but really dedicated for both of those groups is is the. Um, but really dedicated for both of those groups is, is the optimal or what you would prefer to have. Um, so I have been meeting with and working with the pickleball group, um, to see, you know, down the road, what we could potentially do to accommodate. Is there an opportunity at Lyons to section off and have dedicated tennis up front? And then six courts that are lined on the back, does that become a permanent pickleball facility? So there's some conversation, uh, we've been having, uh, to try to meet that, that need. I don't know if with pickleball, especially right now, if you're ever going to fully meet the demand. Uh, we're working with Marvin Williams now and our own facility to try to accommodate the daytime group that, uh, used to be playing at East Gym, um, and so that became Arm and Jar. So, uh, park safety and cleanliness, that's obviously, um, a, a common theme that we'll see within, um, a lot of the, uh, pros plan as far as some potential concerns. So, uh, that was high up there. Um, inclusive design and accessibility, I think that's great. And any new playground or park that we're designing, such as Haven, um, we are making sure that exterior pathways meet the needs and slopes as well as accessible equipment.
Playground equipment.
Playground equipment, yes, thank you. Yeah, playground equipment and, um, picnic tables, benches, those types of things are, are items that are accessible. Um, and then obviously trail and bike connectivity, um, finding ways, um, that, and again, obviously working with public works to be able to create those connecting pathways and expand, uh, what's currently being offered within the community. So this is a page you're really probably not going to be able to read. Uh, but this just kind of shows you this. It's in, it's in the guide, but I gave, I sent and my, um, my slides this afternoon, so it'll be in there and I have hard copies of them.
I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Of the pages, no, you're good. So these were the, this is more to show you, uh, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five, um, the progress that's been made from the twenty twenty plan. Um, so you've got, uh, four check marks, one of them was, uh, the Quantis Park. Um, and again, the, the Quantis Park's a great example where it may not have been identified as a six-year capital project. But, uh, if we find an opportunity and there's funding available, we'll go for it. Uh, just because it's not in there doesn't mean it's not something that we can accomplish. Um, the red items are items that are highlighted as a higher priority. Uh, so for example, Lyons Park, uh, the cold dock removal and boat launch replacement. Um, trying to figure out what the future of that area looks like. Um, improving the overall park drainage, so within that park, there's a lot of water coming off of that hillside and the drainage, drainage system just can't handle it. Um, it's creating, uh, large puddles within the park and across, uh, facilities like the basketball court and, uh, pathway systems, so they're not usable during heavy rainstorms. So that's just an example, but, um, again, four items completed, four in progress, Kitsap Lake. We're going to be very close to completing that. Um, and obviously Fender Gassed is really, uh, the big, uh, project moving forward. And we're in design right now for the ninety percent, so then we can start looking towards, uh, grant funding for Fender Gas. But a lot of these items too, we looked at in the review. Um, another example would be combined community center, senior center and park maintenance facility. As we were walking through doing our inventory, um, I honestly just got tired of writing down issues with the community center and just decided, let's look at this holistically for the department. What, what would be an optimal, uh, facility for us to be able to co- co-locate in, what it might not look like? Um, both of those, I think, are listed as developing a master plan and feasibility study. And so we're really going to look at those as one, one large piece. Uh, try to see if there's a potential with any, um, current property or property in general where down the road, those, those facilities could be combined and the one and all of our staff could be.
Can I add, so can I?
Sure.
Um, the Olympus property, so it's also in there as, uh, you know, adding park-like features. Cause it's utility property, um, so does the use of it as a park maintenance facility impact, uh, that at all? I know it's a large piece of property.
No, and even, um, and we don't have. Um, and Chance might be able to better answer that. I, I think they have some projects there, but there's, it's so limited. So what can occur there?
Right.
Cause we've talked about, oh, can we do an exterior pathway there? Really, we can't. Uh, there, we could do a small pathway and a, uh, drinking fountain essentially, but otherwise we're pretty. Yeah, yeah, we're pretty limited on what can happen there.
Well, and even wondering if, you know, if that's diluting focus on, you know, the real need in that area. You know, oh, we've got some space with park-like features.
Yes.
You know, and maybe not even that. Okay, thanks.
So here is, um, the six-year, uh, moving forward, um, our identified projects. Um, there's a lot of similarities that are in there. Um, then these are in no particular order, um, at all. Uh, the first two items are ones that we plan to get, uh, completed this next year. So, um, finishing up Kitsap Lake Park, um, we're restarted today. Um, so they're working on the drainage issues within the parking lot today. Um, and we are looking on negotiating terms with the, um, the irrigation. Uh, that came in under budget, which was great. Um, it's a good, good sign for that part, that that project will be moving forward as well. Um, the Jarset Aquatic Center, we're finished, we're, we're moving through the state's requirements prior to, um, getting our assessment done for the pool, um, and the pool building, uh, which is going to be, um, a big project, uh, but will help us identify what, what does the future of that site look like? And aquatics within the community, obviously, is something that's extremely important. It's, um, again, items, they're, they're all within the guide. If you have any additional questions, let me know. Uh, but like, just another example, Pump Track is something that I've received a lot of comments on this last year. A pump track is essentially a dirt or mostly now asphalt type facility that has, uh, bends and, and bumps and, uh, really your, your momentum gets you going. But then moving through keeps you moving without having to pump your, and, and pedal. Um, is what a pump track is. And then Splash Pad is something that, um, is a seasonal, but it's been something that's been requested for quite some time within the community.
The fountains are really good.
Go ahead.
So, um, one of the things that they're doing in New York, you know, because splash pads are so, the permitting, the infrastructure, the cost, et cetera. Is they're doing what they call mist gardens. Have you looked into those at all?
Not heard of mist garden.
They seem like they would, um, it's basically just the air fills with mist. Um, and it's so it would fulfill the same purpose as a splash pad, like you get to just like play in the water. But the liability would be virtually nothing, uh, right? Because there's no pool. Um, the infrastructure is, is very simple. Um, so just something for you to think about before I forget. Okay, I will send you multiple articles.
Okay.
Until you just stop sending articles.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think the traditional splash pad, like it's one features to shoot water and big buckets of dumping things. Um, but yeah, that rethinks the whole kind of concept.
And you could grow alpines.
Yes. Um, but yeah, so the, the six-year, um, six-year item is there. Um, obviously land use planning, as we mentioned, um, is extremely important within our pros plan. The green or the yellow area, um, shows city limits, but also, um, UGA areas, the free UGA areas. Um, we've noted within the plan, uh, cross-references to open space policies uh, within the, uh, comp plan that are related to, uh, what we're doing. So cross-referencing those within our appendices. And then, um, obviously just noting what our potential population could be in twenty years and how do we address that, uh, within the development of our park system. Is that it? Uh, these are just listing the pros plan goals. Again, they have their own section there. Uh, most everything is, uh, somewhat consistent with what we had, uh, previously. Uh, but some of the objectives, we changed quite a bit. Um, one example is, um, foster public involvement in the operation and programming of park system, as a lot of you are familiar. Um, are forced to trail systems. We, we aren't apt to be able to be actively out in those very often and we rely heavily on our stewardship groups uh, that utilize those to help manage those locally. Um, so furthering develop our, developing our partnerships with community members. Um, that's one thing I have been amazed with this last year is just the, the dedication and spirit and excitement that the public has uh, to be able to give back to the park system and, uh, be involved in, in whether it's upgrading or, um, creating solutions for trailed systems or just golf course, um, out at Ned Park. Uh, but just trying to be a part of the process, um, as much as they can through word parties. Uh, has been, the community is such a great asset. We wouldn't be able to get done what needs to get done in the park system without, without volunteer effort. Uh, so this just kind of shows you where we're at in the process. Um, since September, when Parks and Rec Commission approved, uh, Eric, the draft at that time, uh, we've sent it forward to Washington State Agencies, so RCO and the Department of Commerce. So there in the midst, we've received comments back from Department of Commerce, RCO, we should be hearing back very soon. Uh, if they have any comments, um, related to the pros plan or suggestions. Um, we've printed it off, it's available for public to review and it's on the website, uh, within the pros page. Um, the secret checklist, I've been talking with, um, staff from Public Works, um, this last week. So they're reviewing, um, the items that are related to transportation that we mentioned within the project and then obviously today. And then right now, our public hearing is scheduled for the third of December with, um, hopeful adoption on meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay, I'll open up for questions, Jay.
Arvon Park, did you guys sell it? Get rid of it? What are you doing with that?
Yeah, so we've listed within, and that was one thing I was going to share as an example. If you haven't really ventured into the pros plan as much as I have. Um, within each, uh, page for each of the different parks, gives a little bit of a description. One thing we've added is we've added the year equipment's gone in. It wasn't in there before, so, uh, the tan, um, playground went in in two thousand and eleven. And then we actually noted too, the number of benches, tables, those types of things, so then we could keep record of that. Management concerns and improvement recommendations. So, for example, on a couple of different parks, we did note that a potential sale of property would be something we would suggest.
Yeah, cause Arvon isn't even listed on, on here. Um, but no, I noticed too, there weren't really any specific items of how to raise more parks funds. It's just, maybe we could do this. So, at what point would the Parks Commission want to debate certain ideas that different community members have for raising funds?
Probably, yeah, some, taking something like that to them in the screen would be good prior to us submitting a budget. Especially for this next two-year budget. Um, we do note in there different types of funding sources.
Yeah.
Um, that could be available. Um, but yeah, we don't necessarily deep dive into, um, or if you're referring to kind of our fees and structures. Um, that's probably a separate policy internally, we should be, we need that probably out one.
Okay. Do we, is, in the pros plan, is there any, um, percentage of residents of Bremerton using our parks versus, you know, some of our parks really are regional, it seems?
Yeah, um, within the survey, it told us where people were from. And I can't remember the statistics on how many were inside the city versus utilizing our parks. Uh, because we didn't have flyers up at all the parks that people could run a QR code to take the survey. Um, but there was a, there was a good mix and obviously depending on the park, like an evergreen rotary park, um, definitely is one that sees more of a regional drop because of the playground area. Um, and just the features within that park. But yeah, so I, and I've looked into different, um, companies that can do tracking and can give you date and time counts. Um, I just am sketchy about the information that they're grabbing, how they're grabbing it uh, without our community members feeling, uh, cause they typically use cell phone information.
Oh, I thought they used license plate.
Uh, you can, you can, some of them do that and I've seen police departments do that. We could, we could do some trackers there, but I, there's companies out there that can do date and time based on your cell phone information. That's not something that you should have.
No, me neither. Okay, thank you. Very good plan. I know you guys put a lot of work into it.
You're not going to be surprised. Um, uh, I would like it on the record that you acknowledge that this pros plan process is not conducive to identifying park deserts. Um, the way it's set up, you know, talking about pipes of parks in each park doesn't really give you an understanding of the lack of such parks in areas, especially those that are being, you know, looked at for annexation when we look at the, you know, growth management. So, um, again, Ilahi is not a children's park. I just want to make that clear, that that big green area, you can send your children in there and they may not ever come back. Um, so I love it and it's safe. I'm not saying it's not safe, but, and Tim, I don't hold you responsible for this, but I just, I want it on the record and I would like to look at options in the future, uh, that would address disparities. Um, because I don't feel that this plan or process, um, identifies the need at all for a playground in my district at the north end. And, uh, all the energy is being spent towards downtown. You know, uh, Sheridan, and I understand why, it's Fabio's piece of property, you know? I look forward to what Bremerton is going to be doing with all that down there. But there's a hell of a lot of people and families that live upwards in the north end. And, uh, we're not just Wilco and, uh, you know, other stores. So, uh, and we don't have a playground. So, um, I just want to keep bringing that up. Otherwise, I love the plan, wish we were part of it, but, um.
Yeah, so I will tell you on the desert side of things. I, uh, we do have some, there is mapping, but that's really the only way you can visually see where the deficiencies are at. When I previously put, uh, these types of plans together, it's been designed not by park type, but by districts. Um, and so that's something I wanted to do, but my staff said, you just need to learn. Let's keep the current formatting, let's make a lot of changes, but, uh, let's keep this formatting. But that's something I do, uh, I am going to look at, uh, for the next plan is, uh, what are some, what are some other ways to tell the story? It's just hard because it's, okay, if you do it that way, then there's a, there's a negative effect. But to me, that helps figure out where deficiencies are within districts, because now you're looking at them at it in a different way.
Thank you for that.
I think this is a fantastic demonstration of the community involvement in the process. It's well captured that, um, fantastic, uh, it's a nice document. It's well captured that, uh fantastic, uh it's a nice document. Kind of two, two questions is, I was really glad to see a lot of the, a lot of different sections focus on volunteering and volunteerism and how that can help. All the different parks and projects and it is interesting in here that the, the back of the envelope, it looks like we're compared to similar jurisdictions of our size. We have about less than one-fourth of the average volunteer hours, um so that's definitely room for improvement. Um does it talk about the idea of a volunteer coordinator in here? We can be hearing about that tomorrow for budget.
We haven't, I've, I've um challenged one of my staff, one of my coordinators to take on that role right now. Uh to try to get some structure together, it's something that I feel she's got capacity and the ability to do. Um so I think we wanna kind of look at and develop and figure out how much need we have. There's certain projects that it would be great to have somebody full-time. Or it'd be because there it's there, there's roots are very hands-on and and have lots of questions and there's a lot of communication going. Yeah, but uh yeah, you won't see it in this next year as the budgets um really was um set. Uh for the two-year last year, but it's something that um we're gonna be de- developing internally to see what.
I know a year ago, a promise made to revisit that by this next budget season, but we'll still talk about it because the promise was made a year ago to bring it up.
Yeah, and on in that same position, um there are mentions of desires for more program experience of. Looking at that, if we expand our, our programming, uh that'll have to come from somewhere. Um because we don't run a whole lot of programs at this time, we're doing, starting to develop more partnerships with community organizations. Uh business districts, uh getting our name out there as a co-sponsor, but that also helps. alleviate us from taking on the full burden of um special events, but that's something that we.
The other one is, I think the, the real meat of it, people are gonna be looking at is a lot of the table number, but basically you had up this next six, six-year capital improvement. Projects, so there we go. Eight, one, sixteen of it, and so. Looking back at what was accomplished in the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five plan. Uh do I got it right at saying here that, that all these projects. High priority projects are advised to commence between twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-nine. Medium priority projects underway for thirty, twenty thirty-one, like. So public, I just think it's really clear, set expectations of when do we expect each of these projects to be done, what's feasible, what are more stretchable? Like, you know. The presentation that have the public hearing. Um you know, I just, I just don't want people to walk away and think, oh, in the next six years, these will all be done. Um. Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, and so we're probably in the next year, we will identify and build out those items.
Okay, sure. But uh this is a way to get that across the public hearing, just to make it really clear what, what do you expect from when, I think.
We don't want to overpromise and underkill everyone.
Okay, so for next week, it's just, I'm sorry, I just do a housekeeping thing, I don't get to. It's just to take a public comment, there will be no comment from council, sounds like, because you have another hearing the following. Council meeting, that's one council.
So this won't be on next week's agenda at all?
Oh, it won't?
No, it's December third.
Yay, skipping.
Will be our.
Yeah, yeah, but then you have December seventeenth. Okay, so again, so then December third, it is to be public comment, December seventeenth, the council can weigh in. Okay, very good, Anna.
Thank you. So um I remember element seven of the previous pros plan called for in, in uh. You know, in lockstep with the Department of Community Development, which also calling for drought resistant vegetation. There was a big call for it in the form of pros plan, DCD seemed to have dropped that entirely. Is this, and I see no mention of it in this plan, is this the new city policy as to?
You're talking about the goals, goal seven?
I saw nothing about native drought resistant vegetation anywhere, did I, if I missed it.
Yeah, I'd have to look back in there, it should be in the, within the goal, I thought it was one of the.
Which?
Um.
Sorry about that.
And I can, I can find it and send it to you.
That'd be great. It, it would be great and like mention of shade trees because I don't, I don't know about the rest of you, but I have never. You know, House Warriors had a constituent mention that they wanted pickleball or um. Or disco or what was the other thing?
Roller skating.
I've never had a constituent say, I want more sports facilities. Um so. It's, this is another case of a man with a hammer, everything is a nail. How often were people able to take and retake this survey to indicate their like of their desire for roller skating, per example?
Sending it to the schools, that's what skewed it.
Yeah. Yeah, I would assume some of that. Yeah.
So I, I just. I, I hope you'll include that in your thinking, um because I have in fact actually had four constituents, which.
Right, that's a lot.
Um saying whatever you do, don't let there be pickleball.
So and it originally was delus- designed into it and it's not.
I know, we could just like do a pop-up audio, here's what it would be like if there was pickleball here.
Um and we're worried because of the noise, is that?
Yeah, solely the, the noise.
I've been following case study from Boise, um city of Boise has shut down two picking offices. Because of proximity to homeowners that did not have input in the process prior to development.
They're really loud.
I, I would think they need to be indoors, but then that would be cost prohibitive, but yeah.
Um we could set it up on the same soccer field, set tinder gas until they're done. Um I don't know. Um I, I also wanted to join um a, a lot of other counselors in saying that uh the. Public comment process and the survey process is just a lot of audio, it was really a beautiful job. And again, something others have said is that um to identify. Deserts of one type or another, um like my district, for example, has a complete desert of forest. Um so and then um. The funding thing is something that we have been working on for how many years to get three more people in parks operations?
Since two thousand seven, when I went door knocking for the. The parks plan that. But the reason why, I know why that failed, though. It was right after the stealth tax for the marinas came through, it was like months after everybody got that notice.
Yeah, so but this is something that I, I can say that we all would support if we could figure out a way to fund it because. People being in the parks, working in the parks, it makes them safer.
Yeah.
No, that, that's it, guy, fine job, I really look forward to hearing about the native drought resistance. Native shade trees, promotion of natural resources, thank you.
Is that some shade?
Throw in some shade.
So my, my comment is on, is something that you can actually address without. Without spending money or, or putting in a six-year plan, so years before. With your predecessor, I got assurances we didn't have from rubber in our playground. The new scare now, and I don't mean to sound like environmentalists and take the, the honor away from our city council member here. But I, I, I do care about kids and it has to do with uh PFAS and artificial turf. You mentioned in two places there, replacing artificial turf. PFAS is in artificial turf in the majority of the manufacturers, now there's a couple. And that I'm aware of that it say they make it without those chemicals that I, I think you know what I'm talking about? So I, I, I'm not holding you to it, but really. So we don't have to rip it out once the EPA comes in and some, some states are. Got legislation on PFAS and carpet and all, it's the growing thing, I mean, we have it in our water supply. Uh up in the San Juans, on, on Friday Harper, I've got a relative that can't drink out of the, out of his tap. So uh kinda you got that on your radar, the commission does, to have PFAS-free artificial turf when you replace.
Yeah, and that's gonna, that'll be the, the biggest conversation will be more with fender gas and, and um soccer field. Surfacing, um we obviously do have a couple of synthetic playgrounds, uh but that's um. Not the, there's other options for playground.
Yeah, because they kick it up when they're, with their shoes, just like the cum rubber, so just.
Yeah, so we're doing EWF, which is engineered wood fiber.
Yeah, yeah, on that.
Uh which has to still, they all have maintenance. Uh the other option is a, a foreign place rubberized surface, which I'm not a huge fan of because you can pick and. Now you've got sections that look and like they've been replaced. It's not easy to, yes, engineered wood fibers probably what will be going on for quite a while, but. Yeah, I've been watching the CD as those, I was amazed at how long it's taken to get to this point. Uh to, to try to find an alternative in fill or synthetic, but there's companies coming out with. Products now, which is good.
You're on it. Oh, I didn't mention the city of Bremerton. I said San, San Juan uh county, there's a private water system there, again, I got a relative that's got a house he can't drink out of. Yeah, yeah, no worry.
I always told that water.
I, I, I for years have been saying we should bottle this water and market it, so I'd be the last person to throw shade.
It's hard to find a place that has unfilled water.
Yeah, it's a great water system, all right. Any uh well, we'll see you not next week, but uh first uh council meeting in summer.
Thank you.
Hey folks, uh before we get to the exciting topic of revenue sources. Sorry, Mike. We're gonna take a ten-minute break, come back at uh five minutes. Are they good?
No safety.
We're back in session. And, uh, brought me off guard because for the first time I think I've ever not seen Mr. Riley with a laptop in front of Almeda.
At least.
Council study. Oh, boy, uncharted territory. So he's here tonight to talk to about the public hearing on revenue sources for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Preliminary mid biennium update. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So as you know, we've got a couple days ahead of us tomorrow and Friday for the budget workshops. Uh, tonight, we're just teeing up, uh, the, the public hearing that is in, uh, next week, is it next week? I believe so, next week. Uh, for next week, we'll be doing a full presentation on the budget. Um, right now, we have a preliminary proposal that was delivered to council. Obviously, that's a little early, uh, to discuss in that without going through our, through our workshops in the next two days. Any changes from that, we will update, uh, within the presentation for next week. Um, so really tomorrow, uh, would be the first chance to really dive into a presentation. Um, this year, uh, what you see was delivered, want to highlight a few things in the packet. Um, the request last year to have hyperlinks, there's bookmarks in within the packet, built into sections. So that was added, um, so hopefully you can, you know, an easier read, easier navigation. Um, want to thank staff, uh, to see, spend some time trying to put that together and how that fit best with this, this, the package. One, or, Ryan, this is our first year to do this, the mid biennium true-up. So we have an adopted twenty twenty-six budget that was passed last year with the twenty twenty-five budget. This is a reconfirm where we're at. So what we'll be presenting tomorrow in our workshops is to show where fund balance landed for the end of twenty-four, going into twenty-five. Where we predict twenty-five to land going into twenty-six. What are estimated ending balances at the end of twenty-six will be, and then some of the things that, uh, some of the reasons why. We go into each of those and kind of the briefing. Uh, you won't see each department doing a whole big, big, uh, presentation over staff and what they do. I'm really there to present what's been changed, what the new numbers are like, and then take, and then have an open discussion. That's all I have.
Yes, sir, counsel, we have Thursday and Friday set aside. I think you know, you know what times, but if we get done on Thursday, there's no further questions. We don't have to have a meeting Friday. So please come prepared tomorrow after gone through the packet with all your questions. Weekend, we'll not have the Friday.
I'm out of town on Friday, so I'd like you all to.
Spend your.
Thank you.
Yeah, we provide the two days for council to have enough time. Really is whatever you need or about.
If you, if you want to give, uh, Mr. Riley, uh, heads up on any type of questions that you were gonna ask tomorrow, if you've had a chance to look through this. Uh, feel free to bring it up now. Go ahead, Denise.
I would, this will come up anyway, but I would feel more comfortable, um, as we look at this, if you're able to also tell us what, uh, you believe might be the situation even further out.
Yeah.
Like one to three years, even, you know, we don't know what we're dealing with. We really depend on you, Mike. I know I do.
Yeah, we'll be discussing that as we go into the presentation. What, what are forecasts like? Relative first sold in last week, property taxes, not the growth, the limited debt, um, from last week. So, yeah, we'll be getting into the forecast and what that gap looks like. It was maintained or got bigger. You don't expect that to continue to grow just with labor, just labor. Labor, labor costs increase over the settlement contracts, a little pre-brief. Three point six million dollars is what the increase was for all the settlements in the labor contract.
Yeah.
So my, my question, I don't want you to answer it now. I want to wait for tomorrow, but my question will be, we've had a request on the homeless shelter for one million dollars in operating costs for, for twenty twenty-six. That obviously is not in the budget. I'd like you to address tomorrow whether there's any room in our budget for that one million dollar ask. And, uh, if not, obviously, uh, are there any discretionary funds? Or what would you suggest the council look at if they wanted to fund that request? Whatever possibilities, you're our expert. And I think it's dangerous for council members to go in and say, well, I think it should come out of here or whatever, but if you have any, I won't say low hanging fruit, but, uh, if you have any suggestions, that's fine. Uh, just describe any type of discretionary, so that'd be non-employee salaries, any discretionary funds that the council could look at. And if there are none, in your opinion, then tell us that as well. Just a frank conversation for tomorrow. Right? Anything else?
Well, I, I, uh, appreciate something asked for about two months ago with a breakdown of all the supplies and services expenditures for every general fund department going over the past five years. Um, so finance was able to provide it. Thank you. Very, very detailed. Exactly what I was looking for, um, but didn't realize it. So came in a week ago, uh, but just my email. So today I'll look forward to the whole.
Okay, I didn't know the way to council. I didn't want to make sure you got it directly.
I got it directly. We got something I think we should really dive into, um, because there are fences there, I think, can be redocked in this tough budget situation. I think we, we owe it to the city to spend the time, but whatever that, so I'll try to come up with something working on it, but, all right.
Sir, go ahead.
Thanks. So, um, will you be talking on Thursday or Friday or at any time about different, like, cutting expenses is one way to balance the budget, but generating more revenue is another. So will you be talking about some alternative ways to generate more revenue?
Uh, I'd say tomorrow with the budget to reset the budget, no. Now, the current, the question Denise has, what does that forecast look like going forward? Getting into that, we have work to do going into the point seven, twenty-eight budget. That has to be at the table. Uh, it's revenue and expenses, both by the equation, so yes, um, in the long term. Um, I, I don't know how deep we'll get into those options that are addressed this budget to adopt it, but definitely those are things that need to be looked at for seven, twenty-eight.
Thank you.
I'd like to know where the line item, I probably missed it for traffic, I think it is. I can't find it.
Uh, I'd have to sit with. Yeah, so, okay, so within the CIP, there's, it's, it's in there. You have to go to the full adopted point five, point six budget to get to that detail level.
So it hasn't changed from the ten thousand it was last year.
Same though.
All the programmatic.
Sorry.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Jim?
Yeah.
All the programatics are still unchanged.
Yeah, it was adopted with.
Okay, and then, uh, we'll have the hearings, or not the hearings, we'll have the meetings, but this is scheduled for hearing our next council meeting. So that will be November nineteenth, but it's just for public comment. There's no action by the council since we already have a twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Right, there will be action that, that requires still two public hearings. We'll do one public hearing for the public. And then in December, the last meeting, December, we'll have another, the final adoption, so you'll get a chance.
So there is an adoption, even though it's a two-year budget. Affirmation or, yes.
We still like it.
It's our way to adopt the adjustments, so those can get, those can get out of it.
Oh, so it's similar to our major adjustments, how we vote on that. Okay, very good. Next, I'd like to welcome our city attorney Kylie Cornell here. Present item B five, which is the ordinance to amend Bremerton Municipal Code Chapter two point nine zero entitled Indemnity of Personnel.
Good evening. I'm sure this is the presentation you were all looking forward to with all of the interesting things that we had on the agendas tonight. I know it was indemnity of personnel. I'm glad to be here. So, um, this is a request to update a code that we don't look at very much. It's EMC two point nine zero, um, and big picture overview, um, this is an old piece of code. It was enacted back, um, by a council that was concerned about, um, getting sued, um, in their personal capacity for things that they were doing on council and the same thing for their marital communities. And concerned about that, it was something that was happening with elected officials and so they passed a code, um, to address that. Um, it also covers city employees and officials, but some of the things we looked at, um, noticed in ours needed an update, was that it didn't cover our volunteers. And so we just had the discussion about volunteers. That's a good segue. Um, updating the code to include volunteers, when they're acting within the scope of what they're volunteering for. Um, just so you know, um, they have been covered. Um, our insurance does cover them. Um, this is just making it clear in the code and updating some of the language so that it's clear, um, what the process is for someone to make, um, uh, avail themselves of this coverage. And so the situation that we wouldn't want to have happen is that someone gets served at their home with a lawsuit related to, um, their service, um, in the city, and then we don't find out about it. And there's like a default judgment or something like that. And so the code requires that the person alerted city right of all seven days to figure that coverage. And that they also not try to handle it on their own, get their own attorney, and then they'll let us know whenever it starts going bad. So those are really the two big requirements. So I do have a slide presentation, um, uh, public safety folks, you've seen this, but, um, we'll get right into it. So, Mike? It is a packet. So you've seen this if you look at it. So, uh, the cover is EMC two point nine oh, um, and this is what we're doing. It was, like I said, enacted in nineteen eighty-seven, and, um, they wanted to make sure that, uh, people stepped up and did your job, um, and didn't, you know, not do that because of fears of personal liability, and also for employee retention. We want to make sure that volunteers are covered as well, so make sure. So as updated, it's gonna have employees, officials, and volunteers, and, um, that's what it's gonna be covering now under this code. The next slide. And for those of you who don't know, um, there's sort of a love affair type thing going on with Denise and her infographics.
It's working. I'm just saying, we're seeing a lot more of them.
Right, and so, um, John Hickling in our office is fantastic at putting these together, and this one was, um, just, I just told him, John, try to work one in, just for Denise on this. And so if you start from the left, where it says, it looks like the symbol of press play, you, you get into this code. A city employee, official, or volunteer is served with a claim. Um, and then it asks, was it delivered to risk within seven days? If the answer is no, then the city will not spend. The answer is yes, then it goes to the city attorney for review. Then it goes to the mayor, and then it goes to the council, makes the final decision. Um, so that's the infographic for this process. There's more to it, but.
Is there a significance for the seven days?
Well, it's to give someone immediately time to get it done, but it really, um, anytime you get served with a lawsuit, there's, the time it's ticking which to apply, it needs to be done very. Before, um, there can be defenses and things that are waived if it's not done immediately.
These current processes are proposed new.
That current process is the same. That part is the same.
I mean, this whole, the whole flow chart.
Oh, no, there are some things that are a little bit different, and I'll explain sort of why we did it that way. Um, so it must be a timely submission, it must be within the scope of official duty, and then it reflects for properation. Um, the next slide. Um, this goes into the, um, doesn't cover anything that's like fraudulent or criminal malicious, any force of conduct that's outside of the, um, forms of, um, on her behalf of the city. Um, any act, you know, um, trying to give an example, if, for example, um, a person, let's say, wanted to trail from their house across to something, and you're a council member, and you go out and you trespass and you destroy your neighbor's property, and you say, oh, I was doing it for the city, and we're like, no, that's really outside of the, um, scope of your work as council, you were, you were. Oh, I was doing it for the city, and we're like, no, that's really outside of the, um, scope of your work as council, you were, you were just doing this for yourself. That's not what you're here for, so, um, that's not something that we would consider, um, in the scope of. Um, and of course, any claimer action brought on behalf of the city against the person. So, um, these are some things that are in the code that are really just to deal with, um. Situations that may arise, and that's if the city denied coverage, planning report said that we shouldn't have done so, then we would be, um, responsible for. And the reverse of that is true as well, we provide some coverage, but then later determine that we shouldn't have, um, they can be. We can be responsible for that as well, so, um, if you're wondering how this lines up with other cities, about to see it. Yes, so, um, I think they're happening, we like these cities, they're good folks, um, so. What we noticed is that a lot of our, that our code hadn't really kept up, there'd been some updates. That other people had kept up with, and I think that's where they had volunteers listed in theirs, and so, um. Obviously, every city in Kitzachek County as well, a lot of our neighbors have very similar codes, it's also been, um, reviewed by W C I A, our risk pool. And, um, it, this, our code lines up now with what other cities are, are doing in the process that they. Okay, so accessibility, so this has nothing to do with the, the amendment to the code, but I just wanted to add this on, so, um. This slide deck was pre, um, prepared, like I said, by John Hickling, but it's in an effort, and this was in, um. Consultation with, uh, Dr. Briggs, um, that, um, we're getting, trying to put together, um, a city slide deck. So that there's consistent branding, um, John also looked at this web accessibility initiative to ensure that, um. The slide has contrast that is helpful for people that, um, have, uh. Vision, vision limitations, um, I know my husband is red-green deficient, and there have been times, and he has seen, um. Maps that are prepared that, you know, show this bright contrast between green areas and red areas, and it all just looks the same to him, and it's. Kind of a grayish, beige brown or whatever, so, um, this slide deck. Used high contrast between text and background, simple, um, font, and, um, also, um. Is accessible for screen readers, and then, um, I believe John is also gonna be working with B C A T. To see how it's gonna translate onto, um, being on, um, B C A T production. So if you have any, um, input for John, just the visual aspect of the slide, feel free to shoot me.
Yeah, sometimes I kind of with TV screens and like, they're like, kind of going opposite, like a dark background, light letters. Because when you look out for like, class, and there's a lot of light coming out through a white slot.
Okay, I'll mention that.
So like, a lot of things use dark mode now.
And that's visual, but Dr. Briggs, in her presentation, um, I don't know that I'd ever seen closed captioning being used. During the presentation, and I really appreciated that one.
Was that on purpose, or is that just like the B C A T thing?
For all Zoom meetings?
Because the other Zoom transcripts are terrible, they can't even spell K C A.
Yeah, it's, it's obvious.
That's great.
It's better than Action Minute.
Yeah.
We're all trying to do better.
Yeah, it's, it's great.
Um, so there was a question that came out from public safety, um, Denise had a question about, just like, how does our onboarding for volunteers work? And I'll say it's different depending on the, the volunteer, and got some information about that, and we're gonna be looking to get some more, so obviously. This would cover things like our board chairs, you know, our planning commission chairs, there's been some concern about it, but their training might look different than someone who. You know, like doing something else, um, but, um, in a minute, we're gonna be kind of reviewing that, just making sure everyone's comfortable with their roles, and know what they are. Understand, um, you know, what it is they need to.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So the first one is, um, how are volunteers notified of the seven day requirement? Is that part of the onboarding process?
It probably depends, um, it's, um, I mean, most of the time if someone gets a lawsuit. Freak down and stuff, um, but, um. It is. Not a part of the process, if like, for example, say. Just show up for like a park cleanup. I mean, and that's, one of our, um, I guess challenges is that you don't want to have like, a massive orientation with a lot of process. If you're gonna have some people show up to, you know, clean up something like that. Um, but if for something that's more substantial, then that, that would be a.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, and then the second thing I was wondering about is, obviously. You're talking about one end of the spectrum where it's just like people fall by a park's cleanup day and do a few hours and then go home. But there's a wide spectrum there, and I know we are all, um, employees. And we are required to take a lot of training on, uh, basically treating people right. Um, so are volunteers at any level required to take that training?
Again, it, it depends on the level, but at the levels where they're like more like a regular fixture, um, and a regular, they go through very similar training as like.
Like if they're appointed?
Right, so that they can get, they can sit down with H R, go through city policies, that sort of thing, and, um, certainly, you know, the council. Part of that as well, and like I said, it, it is, you don't want to, um, scare people off too much if it's gonna be something simple.
Sure.
Um, and say, oh, no, no one can, you know, pick up a piece of garbage unless they come and spend an afternoon, you know, sitting through H R trains, but. We do, so, you know, it's, I'm trying to make sense, but yeah, there is training.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jack.
One concern I have is that, can we go back to what our section said? Is, so the city attorney reviews relatability, and says, you know, was it, done a good faith, it can scope of duty, yes. And then it goes to mayor to make a recommendation to council and council final decision, so. What I'm worried about here is, is. What if there's a, you know, personal grudge, conflict of interest, um, something of that nature, um. That the mayor may not recommend, uh, defense for somebody who's eligible. Is there a way for it to come to council anyway? Seems like that decision may become the city attorney, the more unbiased.
Sure.
I saw the same thing, and I was kind of wondering, why not just have the city, city attorney works for both the mayor and the council equally? Why not just have this?
Just qualifies, yeah.
City attorney needs to inform the council of any pending litigation, shouldn't have to go to the mayor to say yes or no.
And it could be, uh, a totally legitimate, non-personal reason, and then that person, if they're not selected to get representation, could then turn around, see the city. They should have been eligible, and I think the mayor out of personal prejudice. Okay, because I'm talking out loud too, of course, council whole could have a. Personal grudge against somebody too, or, or affinity towards somebody, but.
Which is then why when the court comes back at the end, if it's denied, um. Reasonably in the court, because they've been not like, so, um.
Might as well heartburn, yeah, it's like, so if you're a person and you're obligated to get a representation, oh, great. But then, court comes and says you weren't eligible, and you're on the host of the council, you might have, you might have gone with a personal attorney instead, or.
Yeah, that's, but I would guess. That the average person, if they got served, would show it to their, their own attorney first. You don't have to sign your life away, but then turn it into the city attorney.
True, and that personal attorney may say.
If you retain your own attorney, and then.
But if you just show it to them?
But if you re, yeah, there's a difference between retaining and showing, I've interviewed attorneys, and didn't hire them.
Re-counsel.
So the slide deck may have that, or the mayor.
Yeah, I don't.
The ordinance does not.
Well, it doesn't have the city attorney, it has the mayor. Upon recommendation by the mayor, an official or volunteer should not be afforded defense by the city under the terms of this chapter. City council may deny an official, a volunteer, the protection is generally associated with consistent with the terms of the chapter. The decision is final legislative determination based upon finding the complaint, blah, blah, um. And then there's the preparation of rights, so I think, um. The, the concept is that person, and they turn it into risk. And then it's evaluated internally, the mayor makes the recommendation for the council.
It still goes before the council regardless of the mayor's, uh, the way I read this, regardless of the mayor's his or her opinion. It still goes to the council, then make the final determination.
It's upon the recommendation by the mayor.
An official should not be afforded, the city council may deny, so. So it has to go to the city council, but if the mayor says, we need to support it, then it doesn't go to the council to make a decision, the, the city attorney just defends.
What?
That's the way I read it. So it's okay.
It's a determination of the exclusion.
Yeah, it's a determination exclusion, so it still goes before the council, two point nine zero, point four hundred, yeah. Yeah, it's only if the, the mayor decides that, uh.
Well, right, it's determining if the exclusions apply.
But, but in the end, the council affirms or denies whatever the mayor recommends. That's okay.
Only in the negative.
It's only in the negative.
The flow chart should really show.
It should probably show that. And whether or not it's, um.
Yes, just going straight to the then, if it's no, then it's a, then it's a double check the mayor and council.
Right, I can review that. Yeah, why don't I, um, I'll revise that, make sure that it lines up with it being only on the exclusion process. And I'll update the agenda bill, if anyone wants to, um, bring it down, we can.
Yeah, say it aloud, city attorney says, yes, totally eligible, plain, makes sense. No, I don't think this is covered, then mayor or council have a chance to go.
Yeah, and that makes sense, normally, like, I mean, whenever we've gotten served with lawsuits before, we don't usually come to council to ask, it's usually whenever, um.
Okay.
Right, yeah, it, um. Usually, it, it really, the process in front of you is that it gets sent to W C I A generally, so, yeah.
Okay, treat this item as consent, I assume, update the packet. Okay, that concludes the agenda bill briefings for tonight, I will go to general council business. First item up is the public safety committee briefing. Let's see, um, we had this, and, um. We also, uh, got an update from the fire department about an I L A with Angeles, uh, to purchase our existing fireboat. A contingent on the delivery of our new boat, so we've already got a, a home, a neighbor, uh, is gonna take it.
How much?
Um, I don't remember, it's on my head, um.
I don't know if that was even, was the amount discussed?
I guess, we didn't really.
Yeah, how much, Mike? Fifty-five? That's all? We just paid eight hundred for a new one?
They are cold water that you throw money in.
And, um, also, uh, police presented with a renewal of the Common Street contract, pretty much same terms, um, uh, and stuff, um. They did have a common street, folks join us, we'll get to meet a few of the faces, that's pretty much what we have. Okay, questions? Other regional and committee board meetings. Kitsef Transit, I assume, ahead?
Well, first audit committee. Because it was in the fifth week of, right, October. Um, sadly, Councilor Jennifer Chamberlain was unable to attend, and so. Christine had canceled the meeting a few days before, uh, like on the Friday, put them on baby day. Um, and even though I managed to claw back Marv on camera, uh, we still couldn't do it because there were arrangements. On various has needed to be made, et cetera. I'm telling all of you all of this because I had never heard of Christine's proposed alternative, which we followed. Which was to turn it into a work party, is that the correct terminology, do you remember? I can't remember, but we were able to meet, um, we were not able to have Marv on because that would have kicked us into a quorum. But it's something for future committee meetings, if you suddenly find out you haven't got a quorum, you can still get a bunch of stuff done. By calling it a, it's a campy a work party. Anyhow, um, we were able to cobble together some direction to give the auditor so that she wasn't doing nothing for a month. And the next meeting is November seventeen, and Councilor Jennifer Chamberlain also will not be able to attend at that time. We should have a forum nonetheless, um. Yep, Kitsef Transit approved the budget, uh, I'm not gonna give you a blow-by-blow except to say that. They are spending a total of one hundred thousand dollars on bus, bus stops and bus shelters. Which is not very much at all, and if anybody feels like writing a letter to K P, we now have, or. I, I've now gotten three other board members who are, who think that people should not have to be wet while they wait for a bus. That was really all that happened at Kitsef Transit, selection day was, and during the study session last. Christine Ralphos and I urged them to move forward with the plan to do safe parks in the parking rides.
So then, when will that come up again?
Um, John Clausen is, he said, well, some of them are federal, and we said, yes, but some of them aren't.
Yes.
Let's focus on those, um, mayor, do you have anything? Mayor sits on the Kitsef Transit.
Yeah, but, and you're right, that was a consideration.
Yeah.
Uh, there's only, uh, where the parking rides are is another.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, that's.
Yeah, so they're gonna start out looking at the ones that they are. Um, and, and then move forward, and, uh, she, both Christine and I are like. We want this, yeah, we will, we will not give up on this.
So was the noise generator brought up at the study session?
The noise generator was not brought up at the study session.
Okay. I had, uh, Christine had asked me for the emails about that, so I had sent that to her, and she said she was gonna bring that forward. The one thing that is odd about that, that you can bring back to the next meeting is those noise generators. Are heard, of course, by seagulls, but they're not heard by most adults, and so if they're trying to. Persuade adults to leave the area, it's not working, what it does is it hurts children's ears, so.
Yep, um, that was, yeah, nothing else, I mean, the budget was sort of the.
Yeah.
The centerpiece of the day.
Okay.
All I got?
Question? Nope, all right, thank you.
So, general council business. Remember, now, the, 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 the kind of ties in, so, you know, the county just came out with a, um. Throughout five-year, almost existing housing plan. Looked at some of the safe parts, you could, I don't know, looks like you're on a committee for that, that.
Five-year. I was, yeah.
I just know there's anything else that doesn't matter.
Um, yeah, I was on that, uh, one of the things that, um. I was working really hard on my presentation, um, from last Wednesday, so I didn't get. On this final round, I didn't get all my comments in, but something that you all might want to be thinking about is the Common Streets just mentioned absolutely zero times. Throughout the entire document, um, and also, that was an interesting statistic that you can find in this report. And I urge you to. Um, and also, that was an interesting statistic that you can find in this report, and I urge you to comment on it publicly. Which is that one half of all the homeless people in Kitsef County are in Bremerton. Uh, which uh, in previous meetings of this housing homelessness thing, people uh. Someone from Pendleton Place that we pointed out that um. That places like Pendleton Place were actually feeling Bremerton a favor. By reducing the for emergency responders.
Well.
Hmm, it's not what our emergency responders say.
Yeah, there's a bit of a discrepancy there, yes, so I I think the. Um. We, one of the things in this analysis was that the. The facilities for homeless people in Bremerton are so wide. Of many different types, whereas there's nothing low barrier uh that anyone. And maybe that's why we have fifty percent, because we're the only ones offering anything. Yeah. Um, so people were in, you know, north of Bremerton and perhaps south as well, were focusing on. Like, the city policy has a killer. Homelessness services thing.
Hmm.
But it's a very small population. And most of our population is. Less favorable, let's say, than than the people here. So I I think our comments on this five-year plan would be of use, thank you for reminding me, Jen.
All good, I just thought. While you mentioned, I think I broke it, so.
Yeah, so Anne sent an email. Today, just, I assume, is looking at it, draft plan is hyperlinked to that, go ahead and review the draft plan if you care. And make your comments, you have until December eighth. December eighth, three comments. Did you?
I have one, I'll put it in the order when it comes in.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, so you guys all know, I've been on the wrong side of many, many six-month votes, and I've never come back. And and pushed back on any one of them, I do want to briefly. Ask or suggest that the next five or ten people that you meet in Bremerton. Who say, hey, what's happening on council? Say, well, council just approved a plan to clear cut the watershed forest with no council oversight. Yet will generate no money for council. Or some version thereof. I I have been answering this for a week to everybody, and not just like people in my personal circle, but. My regular cashier at Rainbow. Um. Um, just the guy who did my oil change, uh. Really, pretty much everybody, and I'm just suggesting that you just try doing that. That's it.
Okay, no worries.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, I I'd like to respond and maybe put an end to it, so I think that's uh kind of. Overstating what we approve in this, the history of Bremerton, we haven't clear cut the entire watershed. And uh, council hasn't had to approve these plans, I, go ahead, Jane, I I just. I just don't think you should be scaring the population.
I think. I mean, my immediate reaction is if somebody said we're clear cutting the watershed. It means that we're clear cutting the entire watershed. And that's not what we're doing, at least not the plan that I saw. I mean. Uh, isolated sections being. Clear cut or logged or whatever you wanna call it, is very different than they're cutting the entire watershed. And we still have protection against the the water itself, they can't cut down trees there. But also, when we talked about the plan last week, we can put in guardrails. And it's not like they're gonna be logging it all next week. So in early January, that can be one of our council goals, is to discuss how we can work with. The urban forestry staff to, to ask for an update that we can approve or disapprove or discuss. You know, once a year before any logging activity takes place. So. I think there's ways. To modify. What you're saying, because I I don't believe that we're clear cutting the watershed.
They're cutting in the watershed.
In the watershed.
You set a high limit on how much can happen.
I didn't see any limit in the plan.
The plan is the limit.
Is the limit. It's always to cut on the fifty to sixty year rotation.
Exactly, it's not to clear cut the entire area.
Oh, is it twenty five?
And it's so funny because there's a part of the discussion that was. But, because you also threw in, and we're not getting any money for it, because we're not financially motivated to clear cut. We're doing it as forestry management, we have excellent staff, that's our protection. I trust our forestry management per. Staff and program, and they come to us and it's all very reasonable. And there's a reason that they explained for fires and others that that, that it makes sense to manage it, manage the age in different areas. And it's, it's this patchwork, I mean, that. You can look at any area, we 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 are not getting egregiously aggressive or anything, we're managing our forests. And it's not motivated by money, because. We have a shortfall, should we clear cut the whole thing and make it make make a?
It would still all stay in the water utility.
Yeah, don't worry, so.
Yeah.
Jeff, Jeff.
Wasn't. Um, at the study session, I asked the question of this passing the utility land management plan. Committing to any particular amount of harvest, can you answer what we're getting with no, there's no change until it comes to council? So my understanding is there's been no approved change to the amount of harvest, that's still correct?
I saw no statement of that in the plan, and what Kylie said that I spoke about last week is that there is uh. Four alternatives, right, no harvest, current harvest, fifty year rotation, sixty year rotation. If we have no guardrails on that. Then that it becomes a menu from which forestry can choose. Um.
Because they're the people who manage the waters. So, yeah, last time, as I studied such was, there wouldn't be a change in harvest level, it would have to come to council for change in harvest level. Yeah, hopefully that's the correct answer, yeah, for them to contract and, right. Then then, yeah.
Denise, and then we're gonna move on, because.
Good.
Go ahead, Denise.
Thank you guys all for. Well, that, but it does concern me, because I think that um, one of the guardrails on us. Uh, is that once we make a decision. Um, once the council has voted. Um, we support the decision, and it concerns me um. That there was communication that I know on you feel. Was right, that that you were portraying what really happened, but as you've just heard, that's not anybody else's. Understanding, including mine, and so I just, I I think we need to be careful. With this, we put a lot of time and effort into our decision making, and and once that decision is made. Um. It's, it's our decision, and it all, it feels almost a little like a betrayal. If if a council member is then going out into the community and and portraying a decision that we made. And not the way that any of us remember it, so that that does concern me.
Okay, well.
All right, I think the message is clear, okay. Through the order last week. They handed this out, hopefully you have a chance to read it. The proposal is, the city of Bremerton, uh, I I just signed a document, very similar language. Encouraging Governor Ferguson. Uh, to revise the definition of derelict vessel, include um. Expanded version of derelict vessel and ownership, and to encourage full funding of the program. Are you guys, anybody objection of me signing this tomorrow?
Would that be?
Our own letter?
Yeah.
Signing on the bottom of a whole.
I I believe it's gonna be our our own letter, basically to sign on. Uh, either way, it's gonna be the same language, you okay with me signing? Did you say yes?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes and yes tomorrow.
Alright, yeah.
Was there just another derelict vessel drifting towards the state county this week?
Oh, it's pink now, I'm.
Oh, okay.
So.
Another tugboat.
In Ostrich Bay, there's an existing small twenty one foot sailboat that's been sitting. With the maps coming up for the last three years and.
Building one of the marinas.
Yeah, it is no open site.
We should do a tour of, yeah, that's what we can start.
How, how, why does the port allow them to come in? I mean, don't they have some sort of?
So, you put for the one of the marina?
Yeah.
Um, because it was like a store, the tug was a storage vessel being restored.
But it's been there for years.
Been every.
Yeah.
But the guy was on board when it started sinking.
I know.
It just wasn't, yeah, yeah, did all intent, my understanding, yeah, he's five one C three and he's raising money and then. Stuff happens on that one, but this other stuff, in my opinion. Sometimes boat owners wanna unload a boat and they unload it for a dollar, just to get it off their deal.
Yeah.
And then someone's using it to sleep on, or, oh, I've always dreamed of having a boat and not having the wherewithal to fix the boat. And then it gets abandoned and it sinks.
Yeah.
And and so it needs to be addressed. Okay. The other thing. Council, just so you're not surprised.
And I wouldn't like to see if we could get to look in two weeks or whatever an epidemic is. Next study session or something, we get some sort of update on.
On the domain.
Whatever's.
Well, they send us little emails.
Emails, it's like we're getting spammed.
Yeah, I know.
They're putting in their junk email.
Yes, they're they're gonna cut it up in pieces and bring it up.
Everyone's gonna put a couple pieces in a.
I was gonna say, there goes, there goes the restoration.
Oh, yeah, the restoration's over.
All right. Okay. So there's no surprise. Anne, uh, at my request, has invited uh our two new council members likes to the budget meeting tomorrow.
Oh, great.
I don't know if they're gonna be here or not, but they were extended the invite, they were also extended the invite for the next study session. Because we are going to be talking about the public wreckage process, and they should be involved, in my opinion, so I invited them to that.
Oh, we have a date for that?
December tenth, so we only have.
One more study session.
Study session.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so I just felt. They're more important than me to be here on December tenth, because. They gotta live with whatever, so I thought they should be, unless someone. Uh, opposes that, because they're technically not council members, but I can have them at the table, I assume you had okay. All right. All right, uh, traffic calling policy, should you get any clarification on that?
Well, Anne wanted to send a letter with all of our questions. Prior to them coming here, but we're also going to be having a big discussion at Public Works Committee. The day before. They come here, so.
So how about this, provide your feedback on the traffic calling policy, the proposed one that was sent out as soon as possible, since practically. To Anne, that makes sense?
Hmm.
Okay, it doesn't have to go out tomorrow. Yeah, and slide council, slide content for council reports due Tuesday by noon.
Can can those questions, should those uh? Also go to Jane before the next Public Works Committee meeting?
Yeah.
Anne's here, so she she can funnel this, we don't wanna worry about rolling for them, so.
Okay, okay.
Your son can.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And do both. Okay, that's it for housekeeping items. So immediately after I adjourn this meeting, we will be meeting for an exempt closed session to discuss labor negotiations. Is allowed under RCW forty two point three zero, point one four zero, Princess E's four, Princess E's B. Reminder that our next council meeting, or. Actual council meeting will be Wednesday, November nineteenth, starting at five thirty PM, first floor meeting chambers. But our budget workshop uh is two to four o'clock tomorrow. Don't have that on your calendar, please, that I didn't count.
And that's in the, in the mayor's conference room, right?
Yeah, in the mayor's conference room. Okay, folks. This meeting is adjourned.